Good evening, everyone. Excuse me, I apologize for being a little late. We've just come out of executive session on the meeting with those town employees, those that had to deal with the insurance. It's like, well, it had to take a little few extra minutes to kind of make a decision about insurance for the ensuing year. After going over, much debate about the insurance issue, we come to a conclusion that the board felt... There you go. There you go. I have my own. The board's decision is they felt that it was in the best interest of the town to go along, to stay with the Blue Cross and Blue Shield for the ensuing year. The money issue was so close, and we did have meetings this week with the two of the representatives. The board sat in on them and listened to the representatives that had the insurance. It was so close that, you know, it isn't going to make that much difference as far as when it comes down to the town budget. I mean, I could see if it was way out on the field, but it isn't. It's so close. So that's what the board's decision is for the ensuing year. So I just want to kind of make note of that coming out of here.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, this really has to be done in this meeting. Motion made to accept that, I think, to make that.
It's not the agenda, so why would we get to a heated motion?
Okay.
You have to say we come in executive session.
Yeah, we have to kind of, we have to do this because it's a protocol. But we have to say what we come in executive session and know we're not, because I have to say that first before we officially meet in the end. So with that, we are setting the business meeting, the select board meeting, starting here. So we'll get kicked off at the meeting to cover the order and to approve, to review improvement minutes of number four, 2021.
Make a move to approve minutes.
I'll say that. Any discussion?
I got a couple things under our system accessory. It should be curve graphics.
What page do you want?
Um, page three. It says curve. It should be curve graphics. C A R two O, G R A P H I C S. And then down on the bottom of that, it says, "Worthy center of information to V P R", which would be P V R, property evaluation and review.
Here now, I'll also figure the minutes as printed with corrections. Signify saying aye. Aye. All those closed, same sign. Okay. Adjustments to the agenda.
You have thirty minutes.
I think a motion to approve the minutes. Draw this out. Budget meeting on number thirteen, twenty twenty one.
Is there a folder I can add to?
Yep. All right. Any discussion with that? I'm sorry. I apologize if I didn't see that. I was looking at everything. Any other discussion? Here now. Six. Okay, almost in favor of any minutes of the budget meeting. Signify saying aye.
Aye.
All those closed, same sign. Now we go to the adjustment, adjustment to the agenda. Anything in particular we need to move around?
Yeah, I've got a seven thirty call with Gary Lamerton and Michael Davis to talk about this grant application. So if it's possible, if I can get moved up, I'm hosting the Zoom call, so.
Okay, now what do you represent tonight?
Annie K. Broadman.
Okay. Okay, so let me get through this adjustment agenda. We'll move right up to you. Anything else, Jim?
It's good to be here.
Good. Okay, good luck. One adjustment, go on to the next one. Department updates. Right?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. There was an email back in September around from the Annie K. Broadman, the Communication Union District, trying to identify potential locations in towns to put equipment cabinets as they do their build out over the next, you know, multiple years. I don't, I think it came into Cary. Cary forwarded around. I don't know if it's been responded to, but if it hasn't, I'm kind of hoping to either identify some potential locations or go back to and close the loop and say, "We don't have any." So these are cabinets for optical equipment, basically the sort of innards of the network so that in an ideal world, they're looking to kind of place these close to a village center where there's higher density because they get better performance that way. And the key thing they're looking for is access to backup power in case things go down. So I've connected with Brent Smith. He's kind of thinking emergency services building, but it doesn't sound like there's a backup generator there. It sounds like the highway building is the same situation. I guess, you know, one thing I haven't done yet is circle back to the C U D and say, "Hey, do these units have two or three hours of battery backup on them to allow manual generators to start up?" I don't know the answer to that, but I guess before I get to that, outside of the emergency services and the highway department, is there anything that comes to mind that would be a spot? I mean, typical places I've heard of are fire departments, schools, that type of thing.
Yeah, I mean, the first thing I thought was the town doesn't want any buildings that has battery backup generator.
Yep.
So I mean, I think you'd be pretty much in, you know, same mode anywhere. I mean, I don't think they'd be wrong in the community building basement.
Nothing that's flipping on automatically.
Nothing that's flipping on automatically.
So if I go back to them and they say, "Oh, this unit's going to have three hours of battery backup built in," and, you know, if there can be a manual generator that goes on, you know, at some point in those three hours, that may feasibly work. I don't know the answer. It's hypothetical, but if that's the case, would emergency services building be something we could offer up or not? There's no commitments here. So it's basically, they're trying to get directional input about what may be available.
I mean, I think, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and cost of electricity and things like that to run the devices, you know, they would basically reinforce the cost of that, so.
Yeah, I think the right answer for the select board is that we would reach out to the fire department and find out from them.
Okay.
You know, wouldn't be our spot. Say, "Oh, yeah, put stuff in there." You know?
So why don't I suggest this? I'll go back to them and find out if that's even an option.
Yeah.
And if so, I'll come back and you guys can reach out to the fire department.
What is it happening?
Well, yeah, how many is it? You know, I've got pictures. It's usually going to be pole mounted outside. I mean, these are some examples. They have not decided now the exact equipment spec yet, so, but it's physically going to be something along those lines.
So it's not even inside?
No, it's outside.
And does it, did they specify how much, how long the backup, automatic backup is supposed to run for?
No, they haven't.
So that's another thing, like, what do you?
I mean, if it powers out for four days, I don't know what's going to happen. So I mean, I think those are, I think they're just trying to ensure some basic continuity.
What about the solar field down here? I wonder, you know, if there's any kind of hookups or whatever there that might back up from solar.
Yeah, a lot of those are designed that if they don't see AC power on it, then they just shut, like, it won't. The solar panels, unless there's a battery system there.
Yeah, unless they've installed some sort of battery.
Yeah, I don't know.
That might just be something that they need to consider with that is because we don't have, and I'm sure we're not the only town that doesn't have, you know, backup, automatic backup generation, is some sort of battery backup that looks into the system.
Yes, yeah, some sort of like Tesla power.
Yeah, something like that that can run the systems feasibly for, you know, a few hours to a few days.
Yeah, I mean, who knows? They may get to that stage. I think the stage right now is what's the low hanging fruit out there. Yeah. Okay, so I'll do that. I'll circle back to them, find out if the equipment's going to have some bare minimum backup, battery backup affiliated with it. And then if that is the case, I'll circle back to you guys and you can approach the fire department. Does that work?
Yeah.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Good luck with the brand.
Yeah. Yep.
All right. Fireman updates. Same to you.
Nate sent over new plans and I printed them off.
Yeah, so I had a call, I had a conversation with, I think I talked to him yesterday afternoon. I had a good conversation with Nate about some of the concerns that came off of the informational meeting. He, the initial concerns, especially around the barrier wall, the retaining wall, and closing down the entrance were from the V-Trans engineer, roadway engineer, who said that's the standard they're going with in most buildings. But I think he had a call with them and talked to, I think it's Nate, Nate Covey over there is the engineer. I don't know if you know him. But anyway, the, some of the, some of the, I think, some of the feedback that I got, I was able to incorporate into the plan. So there are, you know, there's a second, second set of plans now with those adjustments made into it, including incorporating a curb on the sidewalk to close down the entrance in essence to hopefully be V-Trans' standards, but also to give us the ability to have the trucks go over the curbing or the lack of curbing over the sidewalks as needed. So.
Do you want to grab it?
Yeah, you can just, I have it. Can you just say it? I don't know.
Two sides.
No.
Two.
All right.
So I've looked at all the big things after the test holes were done. He had to adjust the plan specifically because of where they had led out back. So it's right around two feet, which means that the parking lot drain that he was looking at, as well as some of the drains directly behind the building, were not feasible because of that. His, his thought is that the way the water's running off and where the ledge is, the majority of the water that's running off the hill into the back of the building is coming off of the hill and it's above the ledge, which means it's running through, the strap of water running through that. In essence, at the toe, at the toe of the embankment that he's proposing it, that drain that would go in there would capture most of that water from that. He said that the only other thing could be that it's coming out from underneath of the ledge, which doesn't sound like it's probably the more likely scenario. It's actually more likely that it's coming from the ledge. So in essence, what he had initially, which were two drains in the middle of the parking area, the new proposed parking area in the back, that those would not be able to go in there. And then also where he had initially around the northern corner of the building and western corner, that the lines that were put in there wouldn't be able to get tied down the way we had initially thought. So there's a lot more here that we should review and look at and probably talk about in the next meeting. Basically, with the adjustments that he made, from a budgetary perspective, his estimate for what it's going to cost is roughly the same. So he took some things away from one place and put them in another place.
And he did do a back parking.
Yeah.
This is back, so there's no real five lane like he was trying to do before.
Yeah.
And it just levels the one handicap walk by the office.
It looks like he was sending the entrance lane.
What? Yeah.
Yeah, and he raised it.
And one handicap walk, he's in the way to the park and then the walkway in. And that will get leveled to be the ADA in the rest of the park. Will be whatever it is.
Which, which means we're, you know, going to, in essence, gain more parking, like parking out back. It still brings up a question of what's.
Full line, full line of parking down outside of the building.
Yeah.
Is there a wall on this?
So there's no wall on this at all.
No wall in the front. What about in the back? Is that a wall?
He just, I think, when we talked, he was looking at what, what do we do with the wall?
Oh.
At this point, at this point, all of the blocks that were part of the retaining wall, that's also known as the memory wall, we don't need those for the plan, basically is what it comes down to. We did have some discussion about what we could do for the memory wall. I honestly think that that needs to be almost an whole other discussion separate from this plan. My personal opinion is that the industrial nature of the blocks that were purchased for the retaining wall are not really consistent with what I would think a memory wall would be. I would actually personally want to have that, you know, done, you know, with an engineer and with a mason and actually have a nice wall that isn't, you know, poor concrete blocks.
Is the foundation going to get taken away? The stones, that's still?
That's still part of the plan. And we talked, I talked with him also about parking in the green space. He said that there are things that can be done to put parking there, however, they can't be over the leach field. We have to have ten feet from the end of the leach field, which really limits our ability to put any parking over there unless we move it further back. And again, he said, from a V-Trans perspective, they don't really like having two different entries into the, into the building. They prefer it to be one for the, for the parking for the whole space.
So seven spaces in the back there for parking. That's where we can have now, that's what he says. Look over to the right. Eighteen. Eighteen. Oh, oh, oh. So the one on the left is the existing?
Existing.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Okay, I didn't understand. Yeah, so eighteen in the back and then, I think it says eleven on the side behind the fire station.
Yep.
And then five in front of the office entrance right now. Oh, and then the one handicap. I see.
And in essence, we would level out that one spot where it is. We'd actually have to write it down to make that one spot ADA compliant.
Okay. And then what about the, the, in the original plan, there was kind of a wall that was a short retaining wall to use up the blocks or maybe not to use up the blocks, but that's gone?
That's gone.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, I think, just his, based on the count of blocks, even though this is what you could do with the extra blocks.
So it's all okay. And if you're raising the goal parking lot, you would have needed something to retain. Right.
Yeah.
Right, at the front of this. I see what you're saying. Okay, so theoretically, it's possible that on a busy day, parking could overflow over to the west side of the building? No?
No, not, I mean.
I mean, there's no parking over there.
Well, in essence, then, based off of what's here, that would all be leveled out.
It would, so you could drive, you could drive there even though you don't want it to be a parking area, but on a park with a field over there that gets used unfallible as it may. I don't think, I think the idea would be that it would be green, it would be.
It would just be the grass going across the face, yeah, really.
And you don't want Joe Smith driving down through there and getting here by the leach field. Unless it's, you know, unless it's.
I was just thinking, you have an event, you've got somebody out there directing traffic, and you can park cars over there because it's an open space on a day when you need it for a funeral or a wedding or something. I don't know.
Yeah, no, I see what you're saying. But if, and if you take that, that eight, those eighteen spaces, and then move it beside the west side of the building, you know what I mean? You're not, even if you did park people over there, you're not gaining a tremendous amount.
Yeah, I think.
I meant overflow, but.
Yeah. No, yeah, I get what you're saying. Never ever.
So eighteen plus eleven is twenty nine, plus five is twenty four, so it's twenty five going from eighteen to twenty five? Is that what we have now is eighteen?
No, it would be.
Oh.
We have.
We used to have twenty, we had twenty nine. We think we have twenty nine now. He said we have seven out back now. I don't think we've ever had seven cars park on that.
All right, we did, a couple weeks ago, the funeral was here, there were, I don't know that it was seven.
All right, that's what he's estimating.
Yeah, just based off, yeah, based off the space back there.
Well, I was just thinking of Tristan, then. Are we going up in parking? Are we, you know, how much are we going up for? I think that shows about thirty six. We've done the thirty six.
Eleven plus five plus eighteen plus three.
Oh, plus three, and it's three in front of the gym.
Plus two by the fire station, yeah.
So better. No better.
I think it also, I mean, I was just looking at what he did for the drainage, it looks like, he's tying a lot of that in. He's going to actually tie in the drainage from the, from the bottom of that slope into the existing drain that's out there already.
Is that going to get replaced, though, that drain?
No, because he's running another drain. There'd be a drain adjacent to the, adjacent to the handicap ramp in the basement.
What's the condition of that drain that's out there already? I thought that was.
With the one up here?
Isn't there, is one of?
Yeah, that's one of them all the time.
I know, but isn't it pretty old? I was under the impression that that was a really old.
Yeah.
It was, it was temporarily put in when one of the, one of the drains went in on the wall. When they started doing that, that was temporarily put in. In better condition than it was. It was not a, it's not a drop in complete drain.
So I guess I'm wondering about relying on that drain. Is that what it sounds like you're saying? Am I misunderstanding?
No, it looks like he's going to tie it into that drain, but that, that the existing drain itself will tie into a new, new pipeline and go down to the bottom. That's what I'm looking at in this picture.
Well, that might be something to clarify.
Yeah.
Is that going to be new construction? Because if it isn't, I, the way I understood it, that was pretty old and you're saying it wasn't.
It's not that old, but it was, it was temporary.
It wasn't built for the long haul to begin with.
Yeah, because that drain tied, goes right across the parking lot, ties into the pulver drain.
Well, they show another one right in front of the ramp.
Yeah, so there's an additional one.
And then all the way down to the other. Doesn't the drain from the house over here on the parking lot connect up to one of these drains?
Yeah, and it's like, I want to clarify, but it looks like what he's doing is replacing that drain. So they would replace it, tie it into the catch basins down near the, the new catch basins by the road, that then tie it to the pulver.
That makes sense. I mean, it works, it's in a good location. It just maybe needs, if it's new, then that would be good.
So, I mean, that's, yeah.
So how's the fire department feel about all this?
I don't know.
We just got to them.
You don't know yet. You're on the.
He just, he just sent this over to, I think, yesterday afternoon.
Okay, okay, great.
I made a copy, so.
Just a while.
Okay, I'll only take, take it out by the sheer of the fire department. He showed the difference between the two plans.
Yeah, I don't know. There's a lot of stones in that old foundation wall that could be the basis for a memory wall. I guess that's one of the things I was thinking. I don't know, they look like up close, but sometimes they're pretty nice. I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's something we should assess before we start.
Yeah, I really like the idea of setting up a place where we can honor our citizens who did work for the town in the past, because I think we've had multiple times when there's been conflict about how we do that. And it would be good if we had a place where you could mount a plaque when somebody retired, it was all set up and ready to go, and, you know, it would be good to put it in here. I asked him about the foundation wall, the old one, how hard. Because it is being chopped down, it's too high. And he said it really wouldn't be that much of a big deal for a person doing the job to restack the top over. We could consider using the same historic wall, which would be kind of nice. Take the top off that wall and use that wall. Keep, keep part of it there. Here, silly house, but.
You mean, look down. Right outside of there.
Not, not the middle of the wall. Oh, yeah. I guess it is. That is weird. Excuse me, which way did he go? I guess it is right over there.
It's the whole way after you just go to the fire. It used to be there.
Yeah, right. So anyway, Nate said it would be that big of a stretch.
I would think that that.
That's why they made GPS right there.
And I think, you know, that's one of the things that we need to discuss is what do we do for a memory, memory wall? I mean, we've got, you know, gradient, gradient wall toppers that are, you know, already on both sides and.
They need to go on, they need to go somewhere.
We need to do something with those.
What would I do is put it on, put it on the blocks of granite that come out that were used for.
Make them into benches?
Well, I don't know. It's possible, but there could be a number of different things you could do.
I think it would be a good thing for people to think about, or maybe come up with some ideas. That would be a night, you know, that would be like a nice positive thing to, how can we improve the way things work and the way things look?
Yeah.
Whether it's for the town.
Just doing it out to the community, saying, "What would you do with it? What would you do with these blocks?"
Yeah.
It's like, I don't want to say a contest, but just.
Get feedback.
Get feedback to see what people, you know, be surprised what people come up with that you never think of.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. Let the town own it, being a part of designing.
Anything else on that?
Um, I mean, I just think we should, you know, probably plan, you know, initially had talked about, you know, trying to move things forward on December second, but I think we need to review this plan a little bit more, get more input from folks in town about, about the new plan and be able to go from there so we can make kind of a decision. Philip, I will tell you, Philip, one thing that's on here is incorporate drainage behind at the toe of that bag behind the fire station too. So I know you've run with consent, that was an issue back there before, so maybe you did incorporate mine in that direction.
Great job. The whole thing, the meeting, feedback.
I appreciate that. Devin, do you, you have a copy?
Any more discussion on that?
Focus out the process.
And he said it really wouldn't be that much of a big deal for a person doing the job to restack the top over. We could consider losing the same historic wall, which would be kinda nice. Take the top off that wall and use that wall, keep, keep part of it there.
Here, silly house, but.
You mean, we looked at the other one, right outside of the.
Not, not the middle wall. Oh, yeah, I guess it is. That is weird.
Excuse me, which way did he go?
I guess it is right over there.
It's the whole way after you just go to the fire, it used to be there, then this.
Yeah, right.
So anyway, he makes it, make it that big of a stretch, ask.
I would think that, uh.
That's why they made GPS right there.
And, and I think, you know, that's one of the things that we need to discuss, is what do we do for a memory, memory wall? I mean, we've got, you know, granite, granite wall toppers that are, you know, already on both sides and.
They need to go on, they need to go somewhere.
We need to do something with, with those.
What I'd do is put it on, put it on the blocks or granite that come out that were used for.
Make them into benches?
Well, I don't know, it's possible, but there could be a number of different things you could do.
I think it would be a good thing for people to think about, or maybe come up with some ideas. That would be a ni- you know, that would be like a nice positive thing to, how can we improve the way things work and the way things look?
Yeah.
Whether it's for the town.
Just doing it out to the community, saying, well, what would you do with it, what would you do with these blocks?
Yeah.
It's like, I, I don't wanna say a contest, but just, yeah, it's probably what we're gonna do.
Get feedback.
Get, get feedback to see what people, you know, be surprised what people come up with, and that you never think of.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be a good idea, let the town own, own it, being a part of designing.
Anything else on that?
Um, I mean, I just, I think, uh, we should, you know, probably plan, you know, initially had talked about, you know, trying to move things forward on December second, but I think we need to review this plan a little bit more, get, get more input from folks in town about, about the new plan, um, and be able to go from there. Um, so we can make kind of the decisions. Phillip, I will tell you, Phillip, one thing that's on here is incorporate drainage behind, um, at the toe of that bag, behind the fire station too. Yep, so I know you've run the consent, that was an issue back there before, so maybe you did incorporate mine in that direction.
Great job, the whole thing, the meeting, feedback.
I appreciate that, um, Devin, do you, you have a copy?
Any more discussion?
Focus out the process.
No, thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, I appreciate it, we'll try to, you know, meet the requirements everybody needs to meet, but also, you know, improve the drainage that needs to get done for sure, and, uh, you know, try to make everybody happy at the same time.
Make sure when we drive by, I can go, oh, look, that's awesome, and, oh, look, I've got a place to park, so we feel good about it. Yep.
Yep.
Hey, now, on the next item, my wife.
Couple quick things, uh, the workers are, have been painting this week, um, they will be done Monday or Tuesday. Looking really good, um, tires, because I approved a buy-in tires, probably a few months ago. Well, my recaps are finally in, my steer tires are still not in. So I talked to them, they called me today, said, recaps are in, so I said, well, what do you get a stop for front tires? They have Michelin, the same ones that I already have, that I got last two years ago on the drive. They were fair, they were good for a year, second year, they weren't so good, but they're better than the other ones, I've seen. Um, they're like forty dollars less a piece, so I booked, kind of dropped a bid on them, and then go pick them up. I don't think we can wait as long without being in trouble. Uh, so they did work fine, so.
I was gonna say, I think it sounded ill.
Yeah. So, I made a, I made a decision, because they only have two, and a lot of people are looking for them.
How, how much are they gonna be?
Like six fifty something a piece instead of six ninety, I think the ones I wanted were like six ninety-four or something. These are like forty dollars two a piece, but I just wanna make you guys aware that. So, that's all, yeah.
Chair, your.
Okay, it says on the agenda, Blue Cross versus LVP and CHM to chief one, is that where you wanna discuss this?
Next week, I'm just kidding.
So, is there a motion? Discuss it or?
Uh, we'll make a motion first, we'll discuss it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion and, uh, the county brought, stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield for the 2022 calendar year, for insurance for town boys.
Second, second, any discussion?
I, I just, I'll say, you know, I really appreciate the input from, from the employee down, um, and the executive session, I mean, uh, you know, everybody was respectful, and it was, uh, it was a good discussion, so.
Good exchange of, of ideas and opinions.
Exactly.
Any other discussion?
And the, um, the employees portion is the same, ten percent.
Yep. Any other discussion? All right, call them all, all those in favor of the, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield for the return of the 2022 for the county employees involved? Six five, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side?
Okay, just a few follow-ups from budget day, um, I was about to call Charlie Frost on a quote for the shed involved fields. He called back, he's not interested. Um, I reached out to the Red Community on the purpose, if there was a specific purpose for the reserve money, no real purpose. Uh, the trees in the park that, I just want clarity on, we had two prices, the five trees to be taken down for the park. It's two thousand dollars for them to take them down and leave the mess, and thirty one, thirty-two hundred for them to pick it all up. And I do not recall which way you went.
I don't know, I'm just gonna discuss it. Yeah, I think it'd be easier just to have them pick it all up and.
So the thirty-two, okay.
Yeah.
Um, and I emailed, um, Stan and Jean from the church about the painting of the face of the town block, and Stan came up, um, came in with a quote, um, that I have here, our October 2nd, um, it is thirty-two hundred. I don't recall about last year's number slightly, hearing your conversation about it.
Yeah, I thought it was sixteen.
Uh, it's thirty-two hundred, and it, well, it was supposed to happen in 2021, because there's lots of delays and all this, so it's not happening until 2022, good day, maybe budget for either one of it, so I'll let you look at that. Um, um, I knew they are gonna read about outstanding invoices to make sure 2021, um, was current to date, and he didn't think there was any more, he was not gonna double check, so it's been, um, four days, and I haven't heard, so I think we're current. Um, thank you, then, a couple of things. Cemetery, you passed there, okay, here's exactly, it's not a law law for, uh, and it's a cemetery, I just need dates. When you want that reviewed, I changed it to the three-year that it was suggested, here, cemetery site. Um, and then you mentioned about, um, Dave Sandow, and so I have a quote for him to do with that.
I haven't talked to Tom yet, to find out, he hasn't submitted a bill to you, though, okay, sometimes he does the work and doesn't.
Yeah, I've never had bills, which.
I'll ask him, yeah, yeah, see if they're sure.
Um, then, um, Michael Manius has emailed me this risk, um, questionnaire that he asked a fellow, um, from Department of Forest Parks, and it has to do with that grant they're applying for the Red River Trax, and I answered all the questions. It's supposed to be the chief financial officer of the town, and I don't know if it fits you, but I didn't know, so. If it's signed, it's one of those.
He's the chief, he's the chief.
Uh, help, help, help.
So there's two spots there, I'm not sure which one you have to sign, because there's one, chief officer, and there's a chief fiscal officer.
And then, one question I have about the policy that was adopted last meeting, is that UOF policy for the law enforcement? I believe things needed to be signed to adopt this policy, so it needs to be dated when they adopted it, which I believe was the fourth. And then, I'm just trying to understand all things, I really cannot draw it, but this section is forms, and this section, all is draft. So I don't know what needs to be rewritten with brackets, you know, so this is there, and a bracket there, so I don't really know. But more has to be done than just adopting everything, um, at least sign the top age, so it's plenty of stuff.
It's got the forms and stuff.
And then, um, I have, I have actually the bids there for you guys, and I have a catch. These are the audits, bids, and then here's the clean, so you guys can.
Okay, uh, just so I can kind of hold things up, just so, because I remember when we, we started voting on, uh, the figures they gave, I mean, the face of the pot, I don't know.
Um, I'm looking here to see where we're supposed to sign, because it doesn't really, I mean, all, all it says here is date implemented and reviewed.
Oh, is it an actual signature, just a do, no, okay, fine, that's.
So, um, yeah. I mean, we adopted the law, so I don't know what's.
Yeah, just put the, the adoption date on the, on the stage here.
Which would be the fourth, or the fourth, yeah.
Also, for clarity on that, so we make sure that's on the minutes, that we make sure we get that, so we're not, uh, that, uh, the town motion for that, confirm that figure, that's what the board wants to, uh, to do, uh, to, to, that way, uh, we can make sure that's all that.
Uh, make a motion to approve the painting of the town block for the sum of thirty-two hundred dollars.
Second on that?
Second.
Uh, I believe also that's for painting as well, you said clean, I think that's.
Painting, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other discussion?
You could maybe.
No, I couldn't either, but I'm not, I'm fine with it. Any discussion? If you're none, all those in favor of the face of the pot and the church, uh, the church being, to be painted? Six five, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side?
Okay, so I left the cleaning bid there. And we only got one, it was, um, North Country Cleaners, it's two week, currently half. So her bid came in at thirty-eight per dollars per hour, four hours a week, at seventy-nine and four annually.
We've got that on the agenda, so.
Yeah, I guess it is down, I, we can wait a while.
All right, you're doing it now, so we can just check it out, it's.
So, what was it last, what was it last year?
I think it was the same.
And, I mean, obviously, we had no complaints, no issues, no.
No, I mean, when I asked them to do something different, um, the ramp, we needed it to be cleaned once a month because of the leaves and dirt. They had no problem cleaning it, they did the inside and outside of the windows, no problem, um, they seemed great to work with. I think Dr. Haye asked them a couple of things, and they had no problem.
I've seen them a couple of times on Friday, they were very, very, um, willing to do things, and, you know, doing a good job. And they're very proficient with their doing, so.
Okay.
And I checked with the library, they felt, how they felt about the cleaning, she said, everything was just peachy, so.
Okay.
So this is a three-year contract?
Yeah, I, um, gonna make a motion to approve the, or accept the bid from North Country Cleaners for years twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, at seven thousand nine hundred and four dollars annually.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, one, twice, any discussion? You're none.
You are the guy.
I can't hear the sound. Uh, any other discussion? You're none, all those in favor of the cleaning bids?
North Country Cleaners.
North Country Cleaners, six five, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side?
Okay, the next one is the five. Here we see two.
There's a significant difference here. Pretty serious. Which one of these you made?
Papa Gallo, Sigal.
Okay. Is there something different that this other company is doing?
No, it's a big firm, he did call, but we talked for a while, but. So the, the discussion has come up, um, speaking with, um, from Sullivan Powers, he deals with Nimrock a lot, and talks with the owner, Nimrock a lot, um, on different changes and system upgrades and such, and he commented that he does a lot of small towns, and he, our town is currently on a modified pool, and he wanted to know if we were cash basis, basis. So I put that question out to Linda to ask why, and if, what her thoughts were on this discussion, which does seem a little clear, you could, Linda, from her, her.
Thought.
Yes.
Exactly.
So I have heard that, I've heard it, but, um, so that might, the time to change could be January one, so the thought process will be happening, you know, in the next month and a half, to see if it is possible, possibly we should have a Nimrock, to see if this is something we wanna consider, change, you know, I, everything's working pretty good right now, I don't need to do too much, but he did make it sound like it was a lot less complicated than the end year.
I, I think we should, I mean, that is not something you wanna do without really having a good reason to change them, and I'm not sure that that's the better way, maybe the LCT might, you know, I, I don't know.
I, I. We can hear back from Nimrock, my person to speak to at Nimrock is out, so.
It's gonna make your books look really, really different, I mean, it's really different, and I don't know, it's, it's a big deal to change, and it will look really different. It's, I, I think, some places, some businesses do both, I don't know, I look back.
It's significant.
I, I wouldn't just do that on the idea that, you know, some auditor who's giving you a bid says it should be done, I guess that's what I'm saying. I'm not sure that I would, uh, I would have my reservations about going with that piece of advice. Might be right, but I don't know.
Seems a bit gimmicky to me.
Gimmicky, I mean, a cash flow pool.
Many times, especially small towns, on cash basis, what he was saying, it's just your ins and outs, ins and outs, and at the end of the year, you're already on your preferred revenue, grants, it's money, whatever money you've got in on this day, and you're gonna put out on that night.
It's simpler.
It's not a monetary receivable that you might get in April and put it in, I want to go some December.
Yeah, it's simpler, but it makes it look really different, doesn't it? Like, how much you have.
It is easier for the common person to read in our reports.
That could be true, so, I mean, I think that would be.
I thought that was kind of, just an interesting conversation, you know, but this, the auditor has not talked me about that before, and Fred, I talked to him when the bid went out before, and I know it was the same man I talked to before, so, I, it's just an idea, I'm just bringing it to discuss, and.
Yeah.
I'm doing research, and bringing it back to you.
I mean, it's, it's, his, his bid is double the price.
It's, his bid is double the price of Foggil's? Huh.
More than that.
Yeah.
Foggil's are cheap, I mean.
It's different. Yeah, that's, that's another statement, it's different.
But, but, you, what you're saying is, he still came up with an interesting idea, even in, yeah, yeah, that's valid.
When he looked at our town last audit, he said, he basically said, why aren't you cash? Right, because I sent him the audit, he reviewed it and called with questions and I just like the fact that he knows the backside of Nimmer.
Right.
In and out of what he was telling me, and I, I think that lacks a little bit.
Yes, you knew that, you know that.
Yeah.
But that differs the price in a way.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, no, I don't know.
Well, it might be something that you don't do this year, but you might want to think about other years.
Right, does seem a little rushed coming, you know, this happening.
But good food for thought, yeah.
Is it one year?
No, it's three. It's like, it's actually four, that's how it was written, that's how I was told to write it last time, just copying how I did it last time. That's how I was advised to write it, so it's like one year and then three, technically, so it's a four-year contract.
For some reason.
That's the way it is.
It might, that might be something to rethink also, right? Does the union help with that?
No, no, I believe it was, it was Linda that helped with the first draft.
Well, it's always good to question the way you're doing things, right? Then you find out. Well, you could tell them truth, you could say, you know, we're looking at cash basis, what do you guys think about that? They say you probably learned something from them.
She put it up on the meeting head as well, CAVIC responded with, you know, things similar in size, maybe.
They have cash and they do have cash.
Switched last year, she said, twenty-twenty, she loves it.
Ah, yeah. It's simpler, I think it does, it makes you look like you have less money. Because you don't count your receipt, your tables or something like that.
It was a lot of the towns here that they worked with.
Right.
A lot of them are consecutive.
They mean amphitheater?
Yeah, Town of Northfield twenty-fourteen, Villasville twenty-fourteen, and Town of Peachtree twenty-eleven, that was the only year they worked with.
Right, that's, I'm sure they cost, I think that.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Well, it's not a bad idea, you call some other towns if you really want to, you know, it's a lot of work, but.
They give their references and, and present names for all their partners.
Right, take this list off their list of experience and pick some that aren't on the reference list.
Yeah, I guess you hired some people in your day.
Get a, get a good sense of work. And they may say that we were, it cost a heck of a lot of money.
Well, what about doing a contract with Father Gill for not four years? Because you'll want to think about changing, but not right now. I don't know, you could propose it.
Pretty good.
I know, it's been twice as much, it's been twice as much. Unless, uh, Town of Trevor really, really felt strong, it, uh, it was money that we needed, it's bad, and I'm not getting in touch with her, so.
Perfectly accurate.
Being said, making motion to accept the bid from Father Gill Seagull Valley, CBAs.
Motion made, second?
Second.
And any other discussion?
I would say that, that use them last four years. And we've been happy with their, their performance and money was also a way to win back.
And, uh, my deal is whether, because I was kind of on the hot seat a few times, just to ask some questions, usual.
What's that? Oh.
Yeah, they, they picked who they wanted as a target, they, they asked them questions about certain things. They're pretty thorough, I mean, they do the homework, so.
Yeah, they're, they're okay.
I'm kind of impressed with that, they, they take the time, they do the homework, so. And the contractor, I just said, I said, I was in the hot seat, I was just like, I felt like I was in the hot seat, because I felt, you know, some of the.
That's what you should be.
Yeah, well, that's our responsibility, so, so when they ask the questions, okay, I, I had to make sure I had the answer right, so, so. And I thought it was pretty interesting, they had, you know, they come back, so what are the other concerns?
Well, that's what they.
And I asked, of course, they made me a question to ask.
Well, they gotta make sure you guys are keeping an eye on those guys.
Well, the thing is, they want to make sure of clarity, the reason for, you know, way on its run and uh, what the purpose of it is. She did ask me a question about, related, uh, something about, uh, POs one time, that, that we didn't have a fluent, uh, there was a, there's a way of doing them, uh, certain things that we should, and we should have a point person, uh, because we, there is two of us that are on the fire department and conflict of interest. So they, uh, so to try to curb that problem, and she said, well, this should have somebody that's not, uh, with the fire department, do point persons, so I'm like, no. That, that worked out, but.
That makes sense.
Did you say?
No. Okay, I'm sorry, I need to stop.
Here. Any more on the discussion? Here or none? All those in favor of.
Father Gill Seagulls. Yeah, valid.
Valid.
It says Seagull. Sigal. Sigal.
Okay.
Father Gill Sigal.
All those in favor of the, the audit for, signify with say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Tom, sorry.
So I didn't really have much, I left a paper with Wade there, the Wunuski Basin Water Quality Council, something else sent to me. Uh, Pastor wants a planning commission the other night, one of them, so it's just if somebody wants to be involved in that, there's a form to fill out and they're choosing two people from the forty-nine counties. Put that out there for everyone's information, if it's something they would like to be involved in.
What was it again?
Well, it sounds like we wouldn't be in there, but we're in the Wunuski Basin Water.
Wunuski Basin.
Quality Council, so we're just on the very end, a little bit across is the math.
Which, northwest water.
The close side closest to Peachtree. There, is everything maxed out, it's just like, what's the pond, is it a pigeon pond? No, it's not. Where Bailey's, you can go all the way.
Did you see the paper earlier?
I saw.
I left it there on our desk, your table.
Wow, I've got a hundred figures. Look at you, I'm like, turn the paper over here.
And that's really all I have. Uh, I guess we, I left the budget, we put the budget figures in. Uh, the helping charts and the passing charts are just last year's figures, until we get that in there, we don't have passive yet. So I just put in last year, so, you know, give it all back for, for those budgets. Few other little, I did this right in the last second tonight, so a few little things, there's the link to be added, the cloth painting, we'll have to get that. So. Brilliant, so it'd be good for you to look over, so this, this report says just the budget for each year, you can see these, last year's, this year's, next year's, for you to compare that way. And then, did anything we want to tweak around if we have time? And then hopefully, I don't know if we get the passive, as soon as we get that, I'll put it in and that will get more accurate, sometimes that actually goes down, so, I don't always have to count like a wind up. And, we, that is it.
Thank you, Gary.
All right, Assistant Assistant Dorothy.
Um, Gary's been working on trying to find, get my printer from, um, his company, and they finally told him it would be March of twenty-twenty-two. So he went to Staples and got the same printer, um, and it's twenty dollars more, so I'll have to just update the, the, uh, purchase order, but, um, he's, I think he's actually already got it, so he'll be, um, he's gonna, I asked him to hold off on installing it. I'm trying to use up as much as I can on the old printer, it's working and I've got, um, the cartridges in there, so I'm gonna let it go for now until it stops. So that's, um, that's about all I have.
And since, uh, since you've got it back, when it starts working, you can take it and throw it in the parking lot.
Yeah, and then the parking lot get resurfaced.
Run over a few times with the engine.
Yeah, that could take care of that drain issue.
I'll put it in the drain.
Why never let it go?
All right, any more thing? Fire and facts, Mary, anything on the facts?
Um, I got a couple of things, hold on. Um, I don't know what you guys did about this, but, uh, somebody put in a PO in July for, looks like art section.
Yeah, that's how long it's taking for them to get it, that's how long it's taking to get that.
Yeah. So the PO was in July, and I didn't see that they approved it. So I just wanted to let you guys know to make sure that that comes to me, because it's over five hundred dollars.
Well, we, we didn't know, we, we didn't know when they was gonna be able to get it, because of the, uh, the land.
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, specifically for auditing purposes, we make sure.
They're pleased to talk about it.
Yeah, it's approved, when it gets approved, because even if we don't have the price right now, I mean, I can agree with them too, yes.
Did you just barely get that PO in?
Yeah, it was dated, new signatures, that's, that's.
Nice data.
Yeah, it's July twenty-twenty-one, when it was written.
That was, that was when we, that was. That's how long it's taken.
Yeah, I, I.
No, I know, it was, uh, the other take back from that is, that's not one of these things with the, uh, with the, with the POs that we have, this is one of the things, uh, there has to be adjustments, there have to be, maybe, because sometimes when you, they'll send you a quote, okay, we're basing our quote, and you make the PO, you make the PO and send it in as a quote, and you can't really do anything with it, because you don't, because that's just a quote price. So if you live, you run that, you, the, the process, the way I understand it is, to run that through as a quote, to get the quote first, then the order. Okay? That's where the tricky part comes in, because if you, if you have to, if you do an invoice, that means you've already purchased, see, that's the way the catch-all is. Uh, so that's what we're trying to do.
So how much was the quote for?
Pretty, well, it was, well, the quote was kind of, it was all, I don't know, I don't have the.
I don't have the quote, all that's attached here is, um, an invoice from number three that says that it was gonna be thirteen hundred and four dollars and fifty-seven cents.
So was that pre-approved?
No, that's what I'm saying, because all fast fire have to come to me for preapproval, it wasn't preapproved. That's, that's what I'm saying, we gotta make sure that it gets preapproved, because I didn't even see the quote. So four, four months, I mean, again, from an auditing perspective, that can get us in a, and we need to, that, it's there for oversight, so.
That's what the account, the auditors, that's just what.
You know, we need, and if we need the, the equipment, we need the equipment, don't give a problem, I'm not gonna say no, you know, unless it's excessive, but it still has to be approved, you know, I mean, preapproved with the quote.
Do you think the only difference to refer would be that, the question, the original prices were basically the same, but it was shipping, they didn't know what the shipping was, because it was going to be mall, so that throws, that throws everything, that's a change, that's, that's a change.
But I understand that, but I mean, Dorothy just, she had a preapproved PO for a printer. She had to buy a printer and she has to update the PO for twenty dollars, because there was a difference in the price from when it was approved, yeah, we can do that.
And it was under four, under five.
It, it was, but as an example, there's always gonna be changes to that.
Yeah, the price of shipping was more than the quote for the equipment?
No, no, we just, we didn't know what we need to put the quote, to put the quote in, we didn't include the shipping, because we didn't have a possible shipping.
They didn't include that with the quote?
No, because they didn't know, that was a big factor.
So that's what happened, you guys just had a question, it wasn't filled in, it went into a different pile, it didn't get to that.
Yeah, it wasn't to make any excuses, but the thing is, I have to understand that that's what's gonna happen when you do these things.
No, I, I understand, but I think the, the way the policy reads is that I, I, the quote needs to come with the PO. And if there's adjustments, we can make adjustments, that's not, that's not an issue, it's just a matter of making sure that it's there.
Thank you for that clarification.
It was a hat?
Yeah.
Appreciate the clarity from that.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that we're, making sure we stay above our.
Just hiring an auditor for their four years.
I don't want to be on the hot seat.
You want to stay above water, get a kick.
So one, another fast fire, uh, I'm trying to think, I had something on the fire. Uh, I'm trying to get my engine up, uh, issue with pumps. Right now, I'm trying to, we, uh, we got pump issues with the engine, one that, uh, doesn't have any effect for its, uh, performance, but we're not, we're not able to do the pump testing on it. Failed the pump test, because, uh, there was issues surrounding that, we didn't get to test, so, uh, we had a mechanic come down to, uh, look at it and see. I haven't talked to him yet, I just did it yesterday, he come down to take a look, see if it's wrong, uh, so.
Dorothy, did you talk to them, miss?
No, it's, it's, I just have a PO with a, I just, I just.
Other than that, uh, fire, uh, no, it's just that, just the engine needed to be, trying to get that online as soon as possible, so, I'm still waiting. He'll send me a message, he'll call, so, with the verdict is what they're gonna do with it, so, we've got to have. The other thing is, we had a, had a call from the, um, people that tunnel the IS, IS four eight, they had a call back to give us information to make sure that our engine was the frontline attack, and they asked a couple of questions, uh, about, uh, all fire officers and training, just a couple of questions. Interesting.
She's coming.
I didn't say that, I mean, it says you can still use it, so, totally drive, but still, you can still pump water, but it's just.
I need the PO.
Sorry.
I'm talking. All right, uh, I think scary, I don't have the off on fire, so. First cause, I think the first cause.
I saw Jim today, he let either of you know, uh, he said he found a place to do the, use the. Uh, he said he found a place to do the use of force training. But I don't remember where he said it was.
Royal.
Was it royalty? He said he couldn't remember where it was. It was somewhere near handoff. Cause he asked me where.
Only he'll know the day he goes there.
Uh, so that, that he was concerned about getting that training done and he, he found a place to do it.
All right, library, anything on the library?
I'm not really good with the library. I'm just kidding, see.
Uh, zoning administrator.
Uh, we finalized and got confirmation from the state enforcement division of the A N R that the condemned building that we moved on quickly was the right thing to do and they've closed the case.
Thank you.
Thank you. Health officer, yeah. We got, uh.
Hello, excuse me, zoning administrator. My mind is a hundred miles a minute. Um, we may have to change our zoning permit. Uh, the Act two fifty that I've been telling you about for three years is finally becoming in force. I have three degrees and I don't understand some of this stuff. And I don't know yet, I'm trying to get confirmation from the state whether the zoning administrator has to, has to do these things or if the building contractor does, but it pertains to the green spaces within the buildings. How much air can go out at every stage that you do. The framing has to be certified by a professional architect. Uh, the only way you can get around that is if you build the system yourself. When the electrician comes in, the same thing, it all has to be inspected and certified. When the plumber comes in, same thing, the inside walls come up and then it has to be tested to show how much air is escaping and whether you're complying with the green compliance laws. It's gonna add approximately $30,000 to $50,000 to an average home. And as I said, I don't know yet who's supposed to be able to check all these things. Um, originally, when I talked to the state about it, it was up to the builders. But I'm not sure if it's gonna be up to the builders now or up, up to the town or whatever. And in some of the new zoning administration pamphlets that they've got out on the permits themselves, there's spaces that have to be filled in with a copy of whatever that permit was and when it was certified. So, I mean, right now it's, it's a mess, which I knew it was gonna be. Especially since Terry and I just started getting the old permit straightened out. That's it.
Uh, health officer, I don't have anything on my end other than, uh, we voted in Dan as the health officer, assistant health officer and, uh, we put the work on that. So, uh, just to avoid cases that come up that could be conflict of interest with, uh, Chair of the SWAT Board. So that kind of is a safe area.
That's a good idea. I know that. I know. It's good. Good guy. Got the right man.
Even stays still, doesn't want to lose something.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm happy. You say, well, what do we? Got it all there already. So they know who we are.
Maintenance, we had to think of maintenance. I think we kind of covered that with the, some of the projects that take in place that could be considered priority. Something system is all set down here.
Yeah, just to help connect, you know, next, uh, in the spring. So that's all he's doing this year.
I T, anything with I T?
We had a printer that had its mind of its own today and would stop printing literally for four hours. So Gary came Friday and got the job.
And now you have a little square paper?
I think so. Getting used to color.
Much for short paper. All right. Planning commissioner.
Uh, just goes along with, uh, what I was saying earlier. N B D A came down to the meeting, Irene, and explained some of these things, some of the changes to the Act two fifty. And this is just the beginning. Uh, the changes are gonna take about four years to totally implement. Um, and it's not gonna get any easier. So the suggestion is if you're gonna have anything built, build it yourself because you're exempt from all nonsense.
That's interesting.
So individual is still built.
Yes, yes. And they're exempt from all this other nonsense.
Okay, just gonna leave it there. Are there any more there?
Just the barriers on the cement. If you put in a cement foundation, just the barriers now you have to put in with doubles the cost. It's just, it's unbelievable.
All right, anything with community club? I know we got this down here, Mark.
No, I haven't heard of it either.
Update on school board member.
So there's an email from Carrie. I have no chance to read it. Um, I reached out to Dr. Russo Savage to understand exactly what, um, the school board has the authority to do, the select board has the authority to do. So in my, I'd send it out to the select board members and to the town for, uh, for, for, before I got this information. Um, in which I, I read, I read, um, it's, uh, title sixteen V S A seven oh six I, paragraph B, sub-paragraph two, which says that if this, uh, school board member represented a town that does not have a school board, the clerk should immediately notify the select board of the town within thirty days of receiving that notice, the select board shall appoint a person who is otherwise eligible to serve as a director from the district to fill the vacancy until an election, I think special or annual district meeting is held. Um, there is a however. Uh, according to Act one fifty four, uh, which was passed in twenty twenty, um, under, uh, section B, um, one thousand one hundred and seventeen elections. It says notwithstanding any provision of law to the contrary, a vacancy occurs on board of Unified Union School District and vacancy is a seat that is allocated to a specific town. The clerk of the Unified Union, um, district shall immediately notify the select board of the town within thirty days after the receipt of that notice. The Unified School District Board, in consultation with the select board, shall appoint a person who is otherwise eligible to serve as a member of the Unified Union District Board to fill vacancy until, to fill the vacancy until an election is held on the annual or special meeting unless otherwise provided in accordance with Unified Union School District's Articles of Agreement. So in essence, we should be consulted by the school board. We should be notified immediately of the resignation of a member of the, of the school board. Uh, but the school board still maintains the right to appoint whoever they choose based off our record and duty.
So what about the election thing? You said.
The election would have to be either a special town meeting or the annual town meeting in which that position would be elected. So we, we still, I think from my interpretation of this, and that's without going to a lawyer, is that, um, we, we still could choose, the town could still choose through election at a special town meeting for that position. Otherwise, it would be done in the next annual election.
So the school board was supposed to notify you guys within thirty days?
Well, they were supposed to notify us immediately as the way the law is read.
And you weren't.
And then within thirty days of the receipt of that notice, uh, they should appoint a person. Uh, so based on that, when did they say that, was it Sarah left? When did they say that she left?
Uh, can I say this summer?
So their first meeting was, I didn't, I didn't, September, I think it was probably, ended in September. So we're in the middle of November.
Uh, so I think it was in the, there were minutes. I went back and did their, read their minutes. And I almost think it was hinted on or maybe said, might have mentioned or they knew for sure in, uh, April.
So in, in essence, the school board has neglected their duties to inform the town of Rock for six months. In addition, without informing us and not asking our consultation with who our representative should be. And here we sit.
And they conducted business without, without our town being represented by.
Correct, for more than thirty days.
Conversation without representation.
Well, I don't know what I'd call it, but it isn't, it isn't kosher.
Well, we pay monies to them and.
Yeah, making decisions about what's gonna happen to our children and you weren't represented.
I concur. I think the fact is that we weren't properly represented with the members of the school board that were elected from the town of Rock. Um, that being said, it, it, it's one thing that the law is the law. We can't really get around that. However, the school board feels at this point, in my understanding, um, they, they.
They can appoint somebody.
They can appoint somebody, but they haven't lived up to their part of the deal in the law, which is that they needed to notify us and it needed to be filled within thirty days. If we would have known, we could have asked folks in town, we could have. But instead, now they've held meetings, as you said, they've held meetings and conducted business for, could be six months. I mean, they don't need all the summers, so it's, it's not, you know, but September, October, November, you know, that's.
And, and were you, were you right when you thought that they could appoint someone who's not from Rock?
Um, I don't. I don't think they can. I, I think my interpretation from another part of Act sixteen made me feel that that was the case of that.
That's not right. That's, that's correct. But they can, they're supposed to tell us, they're supposed to consult with you, select board. And then they can do what they want anyways?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
So.
Unless you have an election.
Exactly. Which.
You have an election.
The law is, uh, great. I mean, it's, and it's set, it's set to expire.
Well, the whole law, Act one forty six isn't great.
What's that?
The whole, the whole law, Act one forty six isn't great. It's a farce. So this just goes along.
But if we have somebody who wants to be, what do you have to do? Call a special meeting and have an election?
We don't.
Well, we.
We don't. We have to find somebody.
We have to. And.
And so how's that go?
I think.
So we'll put it in the newspaper. I'll put it on the Facebook page. I've asked a few people in person.
No.
And they're just. Yeah, I have to show it to them.
Sure, that's nice.
She asks you.
Yeah, don't.
And who's like.
You want to give them to me, man?
I guarantee you.
We want them to know.
To, to be honest, though, my concern is that we have somebody that we feel would be a good fit for that and they feel is less than desirable for that position. I won't name any names, but.
Well, if we have an election.
If we have an election.
I mean, whoever, whoever.
Whoever runs.
Whoever runs, runs, whether there's somebody that you pick and ask or however it works out. But it's not that hard to have a special meeting and have an election, but you gotta have somebody that wants to run regardless of who it is.
Yeah.
So what about the Friends of the Library people? Has anybody, have you talked, has anybody talked to them? No? I thought maybe there might be some fertile ground in the Friends of the Library group because that seems to have grown and, you know. And Donna, I think is in that, just matter of fact, I think she's kind of the head of it.
I did my tour, I went down there, I went through two different, uh, terms. Teachers' union, through negotiations and they hated me. The teachers' union absolutely hates me.
Well, congratulations.
Yeah, I am proud of it. They did not want to be fiscally responsible for anything and I held them accountable.
Well, you know, there was that, there are possibilities that way, but.
The back part of the gun, as you know, says, it has to be.
Yeah, yeah, it has to be, or it has to be, uh, pointing to fill the position, they still need to fill the requirements of being a resident of the town who is the seat of the president. Yeah.
Well, that part's good.
They must have missed that, of course.
Has anybody thought to ask, like Peter? Maybe Peter Lyons would like to do it.
I could reach out.
Or somebody from the lake that he might.
Anything else?
I don't know, just a thought.
Well, he also.
Yeah, it's, I think the big thing is, you know, we, we, if anybody knows anybody that might be interested in being, um, you know, being.
Cause if we don't figure it out now, it's gonna have to get figured out by town meeting day. I mean, there might be two positions if this person's term wasn't up.
Yeah, there'll be two people. The person whose term is up is playing the run again. So that should be good. And then we'd need to fill this spot.
Yeah, it's, it's still, I mean, I think we need, if anybody knows anybody, I think my point is it's still very concerning that we have gone this long.
Well, you could write them a letter.
At the school board.
The, the select board could write the school board a letter and say, we want you to know that this is what happened and we're not, we, we're, you know, not happy with it. I don't know, maybe the town agent, you talked to Donna, maybe she can help phrase it or not. But, I mean, I don't know what good it would do, but it would go on record by saying.
Yeah. We shouldn't.
What do you think about that? Is it good to go on record or is it, doesn't matter?
I think it's good to go on record. I think it doesn't matter.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
I think on all of them. It just, it sends a message for us to the school district about our displeasure. But there's not, nothing else that we can do about it.
I mean, it, it does tell them that we know what's happening. You know what I mean? Maybe this is the rock. The rock doesn't say anything. And when it happens in, it would bury when it happens in fairness. They're just gonna do the same damn thing because the town's not here.
Right. Well, the thing is, the towns have been pushed through Act forty six. The towns get pushed farther and farther away from having any, you know, real effect on.
Well, I'd see this, this act being reconstructed shortly because it's not working. It's not doing anything that was cut out to do, so.
Thing is, is the difference between towns and losing sovereignty.
They've already lost.
They have.
Well, Act forty six.
Act forty six, where they put the.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. And it's not working, so they're gonna have to rewrite it. And then they want to consolidate more, so.
That's a.
You know, I, I've said it off record, and I'll say it off record, that, you know, Act forty six, you know, and the limitations that it's created are, are really, um, you know, unfortunately are, are negatively impacting the gross economies of villages like Rock, towns like Rock. And then, you know, we're not gonna be able to draw in, you know, uh, potential taxpayers to limit our area because we don't have the ability to choose where our kids go to school. And I, and I'm, you know, I'm a pro-choice person when it comes to, to my, my kids' education most certainly. And I know that doesn't make me, you know, doesn't make me, uh, liked by everybody. But, you know, I'll be honest about it, it's, when this type of sovereignty for a town is, is going negatively impacts the future of this town. Um, you know, we, we as a select should have the ability to do something about it and we really don't.
Act forty six crippled it.
It did.
All right, do you have any discussion? Alright, do you have any discussion?
No, I'm done.
For tonight.
I think you could, you know, you probably like that.
You might eliminate the filibuster. No, I, I will, I will start a draft letter and I'll write in for this select board to send those comments to the...
I think we have a file folder in the file cabinet somewhere, the letters from the select boards of the school board that happened when Act 46 stuff was happening.
I'll do is ask Mr. Brett Leabear.
Excuse me?
Ask Mr. Brett Leabear.
Well, that was one person. You were involved in it too, and me and Erin.
Yeah, I wouldn't have that.
I wouldn't say that we didn't try, we did try.
Yeah, yeah, as we, this, this feels so good.
Oh, really? Here we are, here we are talking.
I mean, basically, we're well represented on the school of stuff, you know, I feel comfortable doing this.
So much for sovereignty.
I'm ashamed of it.
I was gonna, that's why you signed it.
Sorry, I've got no room for you.
That's alright, that's fine. I think the heat number a lot, I think, I'll tell some notes here, so... Okay, uh, we're gonna get into business for the cleaning, we're on it? Yes, open to the public and out of business. I think I kinda pointed out, I should've pointed out that on the fire issue, we did have one of three meetings last night. Zoom meetings with the Capitol Fire Mutual Aid System. Uh, communication, which was really interesting. Uh, they're trying to start the project, a piecemeal type deal, trying to deal with it for the last, I don't know, four, five years, six years. And, uh, they're, I'm looking at their processes, they're thinking about charging... Right now, at this point, charging the towns that are participating with that Capitol Mutual Aid Fund's communication, which Rock is not one of. We don't use their source, we use Twin State at this point on this side of the town, so... But the other one, that side, there's, it's called Capitol, which is Berry, Muppeter, Berry City and Muppeter. With a fee of $25,000 a year or something. Towns are trying to incorporate that money into a budget, pay for, that's the start for that phase that has to do with, uh, towers and, uh, something, radio equipment and all the other, you know, there. But we're, they wanna, they wanna drag Rock and Rockdale into the picture at some point. They kinda mentioned that last night, I kinda, so they've been, you know, I'd say, well, I've seen it myself, let me tell you, I mean, it's like, uh, my best explanation would've been, it's like, well, you know how, you know, you got these black hole stars that suck your light, doesn't let it back out? We got a, we got a white hole where you got transmission that comes and just bounces back out, we'll get it, you know? And it's not what it bounces. You know, but, uh, it was a good meeting and, uh, participation in it. They did vote, I abstained from the voting to approve that portion of the, of that section, so... Didn't have that confirmation myself, I mean, they've been hard to last five, six years about it. And, uh, and there's two other who were, as I said, abstaining as well. But it did pass, that portion and that section, so they're gonna be, uh, more to come down the road at some point, whenever that is, so, uh, but I'm trying to stay on top of it, so...
Yeah, but sometimes things happen.
Well, they, well, they're supposed to get in touch with the Select Board members in the towns that, in the area, they'll cover a whole thing, to go all this, so, uh, be interested to see how that, how that goes, so...
Is the town gonna get that property from the, um...
GMP?
Yeah, I said, what's going on?
Michael Neves, one of his arms on fire.
Yeah, I don't, he hasn't said too much about it, they were still doing some studies on it.
Yeah, I think so.
Hasn't happened.
It hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, I guess it was in the other day, though, when they were moving forward on the deeds, fire attorney or somebody to do up the deeds and everything and do the whole title search. Does the grant, you pay for that?
Right.
Coming back to, the other thing, uh, with the communication is due to the fact, uh, because they're compromising this communication deal with Capitol Mutual Aid, the dooms are going up, so, they will be going up because that deal with a lot of legal issues that's gonna surround this is going above what the dooms are right now. So they're gonna say, "Well, we're gonna have this much money if we're gonna keep paying legal fees."
Yeah.
So they see more coming, so, so that's, another thing, comes back to part of it. It belongs to the Capitol Mutual Aid System, so, um, so, I mean, it's hard to do, so, anyways. Anything else for open to public to build a business? If not, we got, uh, set the agenda for the next meeting.
When we release the Phase 2 in ARPA, can we do like Parkamot Drainage next to it? Just so we're gonna make sure people know that what ARPA is.
As opposed to calling it ARPA because that's the funding source? We should put it as an infrastructure drainage and parking improvement project. Because we're in essence using ARPA funds for...
But you may have other funds.
Well, we may have other funds, yes.
Yes.
Well, I don't remember, but I'll forget the lady one because he's on, we didn't see it this next time.
Well, that's what Mike's point was, was that there's, you know, the infrastructure bill was passed and as infrastructure, what other money might be out there to spend on Parkamot besides... Because the lady grant's gonna still cost the town $40,000, right?
Yeah, but we can use the other funds for it. Yeah, we don't have to, so the match can come out of that ARPA fund. So it would be Scott Tree for the town, but the big thing with the lady grant, that $200,000, that grant proposal is put in specifically for the drainage project.
Right, but you don't know what money that's drawing on. Whether that was from the first COVID money or...
That had to do with Capitol infrastructure.
The one that just got passed.
Yeah, the lady grant is part of the infrastructure.
That had, that's, that has actually been signed into law, which makes sense because it's infrastructure.
Well, and I think we were about to run out of that on his list, so, it's a good sign.
Late hundred billion of the 1.92 trillion is infrastructure, the rest of it's pork and whites.
Well, it'd be just for the town to be able to look at that project and feel like we got something good out of that. That's, that's the above ground stuff, the bells and whistles that people can see. I think we want to make...
Well, I, I think the good thing is that that lady grant comes through, we're not looking at trying to find $100,000, we're gonna add an extra $100,000 plus whatever additional funds come to us, and that's, I think...
Yeah, and it's our job to spend it responsibly, make sure we make jobs with it and all that stuff.
I agree.
Anything else we can get agenda? You got anything, your old man coming up?
No, no.
Girl, don't be here next meeting, I mean, like...
Do we really keep this discussion on, uh, agenda?
I would keep it on air, um, and when the next meeting comes up, if we need it on air, we can... You better move it, yeah, bump it off, we don't have to.
The school board.
Maybe we'll have somebody to, a recommendation for the school board right now.
It's a person who's on there, who has, who is our person who's still on there?
It's Sarah Dennis.
Sarah Dennis and Allison.
Allison Ingersoll. It's Sarah, was Sarah, not the Sinsky?
Sandra.
Sandra, Sarah's the person. What's a Sarah's?
Alright, anything else? Anything on bids or else that would make it work?
What's that?
We're gonna do Saturday, right?
No, I'm gonna do that tonight, I'm gonna, we sit down like I thought it was last meeting.
So should we, should we, yeah, yeah?
Yeah, well, yes, we will, we will. Yeah, something yellow. Go ahead, put that on there, yeah.
Anything else? Nothing, look for that magic.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll say that.
Favors, if I say aye?
Aye.
It's a pose, same sign. Perfect, closed. Thank you.